Good evening councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting this evening, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire drills that are on, or fire regulations are on the screen behind me. Three exits should the fire alarm go and there are no practice alarms tonight. One, two, and the third exit over there. And we're assembled across the road under the canopy outside Waitrose. Can we all please make sure our mobile phones are switched to silent or off? Moving on, members of the public, I'd like to say that the committee will be understand the matters under consideration tonight, our emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you and the committee, refrain from booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. Can I just introduce the officers sitting at the table in front of me? First of all, Lewis Jones, our legal man. Then we have people you won't know, Jeanette Walsh, who's the Development Control Manager. Next is Cat Pearson, the area team leader. Then we have Rebecca Clark, Principal Planning Officer, and the lady who will be making the report on this application this evening. And then Elizabeth Sims, Head of Planning Department at Waverley. Moving on then, to the main business. Agenda item number one, minutes of the last meeting, to confirm the minutes of the last meeting of the JPC that held on the 8th of November. Been laid on the table for half an hour, so you'll wish I signed them as a true record. Thank you. Number two, Emma, apologies for absence and declarations of substitutions.
We have apologies from Councillors John Ward, Mary Forasaski, Pat Frost, Stuart Stannett, and Michael Goodridge.
Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. And again, Emma, declarations of interest prior to the meeting.
We have one from Councillor Kevin Dinos. It's a non-perceivable interest as he lives in the village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Four, questions from members of the public. Have we had any, Emma?
Number seven.
Fine. Moving on then, applications for planning permission. B1, Land West's sweetest copse Lockswood Road, Alford. Approval of reserve matters. Appearance, landscaping, layout and scale following the outline approval of WA 2015 2261 for the erection of 55 dwellings, including 22 affordable, associated landscaping and open space, children's play area and private drainage systems. And the officers, first of all Jeanette Walsh, followed by Rebecca Clark.
Good evening councillors. With the agreement of the Chair and the Deputy Chair, given the numbers of questions of fact that came up on the site visit on Monday morning about drainage, I thought I would ask the case officer to bring you up to date before the presentation or the consideration of this item in relation to drainage. This should help you, I think, set aside in your own minds these drainage issues as they're not material to the reserved matters. So I'm hoping that this is actually going to be quite helpful for you. And I'll hand over to Rebecca.
Thank you Jeanette. So members, just to confirm the position, so as stated in the agenda report, four conditions were attached to the outline permission. These were in relation to drainage matters. Conditions nine, 10, and 11 relate to surface water drainage and the proposed SUD scheme. And then condition 22 relates to foul water drainage. In seeking to discharge condition 22, the applicant submitted information including a verification report from Thames Water, which confirmed that the development could be connected to the existing Thames Water infrastructure without any requirement for any off-site sewer reinforcement works. The waste water from the site is to be treated at the Lockswood Pumping Station, which falls under the jurisdiction of Southern Water. However, please be advised, members, that this is not a matter which would affect the determination of the matters before members this evening, and it was in association with the conditions attached to the outline permission. Thank you.
Right, members. The reserve matters, remind you, the scale, appearance, landscaping and layout. So can I turn it over to you?
Thank you Chairman. So moving on to the application before members this evening, can I firstly draw members' attention to the update sheet? Firstly, I do need to apologise, there is a typo in the recommendation on the update sheet. The word adorable should of course read affordable, so apologies for that. So just to state and confirm that's on the update sheet. Amended minor plans have been received following the drafting of the agenda report. These are stated on the update sheet and will be referred to in the presentation. An additional letter of representation has been received. It has also come to officers' attention that there has been some confusion regarding dates of plans. And just to confirm this, the amended plans are those received on the 14th of October, which were reported in the agenda and which were subject to public consultation. The former plans, which were manually re-indexed as superseded plans on the council's website on the 30th of October, these are not to be considered as part of the application. The lead local flood authority has confirmed to officers that as the application does not relate to drainage aspects, they have no comments to make. To provide a verbal update, the county archaeologist has commented that the required fieldwork has largely been completed by the Thames Water Archaeological Services and only a small area remains to be finished. The fieldwork will now be followed by off-site assessment. In light of the amended plans, the recommended plan numbers condition, which is condition number one, has been amended and an additional condition has been recommended in relation to the substation. As members will see on the update sheet, amended landscaping plans have been submitted. However, these are still being reviewed by the council's tree and landscape officer. Therefore, officers recommend that the landscape conditions as set out in the agenda report remain. So turning to the presentation. The site is to the east of Lockswood Road and comprises an open field. There is a nursery to the south of the site and residential properties to the north and west. The existing surrounding properties include a mixture of single-storey and two-storey So members will see some photographs of the site on screen now. Outline permission was granted in 2015 for the erection of up to 55 dwellings. The principle of development has therefore been established and access to the site has been agreed at the outline stage. The current application seeks approval for the layout, appearance, scale and landscaping. In terms of layout, the plan shows 55 dwellings spread across the site with a central spine road. Dwellings would face onto the internal road network and the parking would comprise a mixture of onsite and offsite spaces. There would be areas of public open space located centrally within the site and to the north-east. A locally equipped area of play would also be located in the north-east corner. In terms of scale, the dwellings would be two-storey in height, featuring some single-storey elements such as porches and rear projections. Units 49 to 51, if I zoom in, to the south of the site, would feature accommodation in the roof. The overall heights of the dwellings would range from eight and a half metres to 9.7 metres. The proposed density would be 19.8 dwellings per hectare. Dwellings would include a mixture of one, two, three and four bedroom units and a total of 120 parking spaces would be provided on site. In terms of landscaping, the majority of the tree cover would remain. A small number of trees would be removed owing to their poor condition and small size. No high-quality trees would be removed. The public open space would be grassed. Areas to the west and north-west would be seeded with a meadow mixture for wetlands and there would be amenity planting to the front of the dwellings. Areas of hard standing would include tarmac to roads and pavements and concrete block paving for the driveways. A mixture of close board fencing and brick walls would be utilised in terms of boundary treatment. Turning now to appearance, the next couple of slides members will see will provide examples of the different house types to be provided on site. As members will see, there are a variety of building styles with different roof forms. Dwellings will include porch canopies, bay windows, chimneys and hip roof forms. In terms of materials, the palette would include a variety of brickwork, clay tile hang-in, timber boarding and areas of render. There would be three blocks of flats on site, each containing relatively small numbers of units, the maximum would be four units in units 49 to 51. These buildings would also include features such as chimneys, gable projections, porch areas and a mixture of materials to add visual interest to the elevations. The proposal would include two bungalows to be provided on the site. These would be one-bed units which would be located in the north-west corner of the There would also be a mixture of single and double garages which would serve a number of the dwellings. The garages would feature picture roofs and brickwork. So on screen, members will see the proposed street scene within the eastern section of the site, which demonstrates the variety in the appearance of dwellings. And the next two slides will provide members with visuals of the site. This first slide shows the centre of the site with the central public open space, landscaping in the area and surrounding dwellings of varied form, materials and appearance. The second slide shows the north-west corner of the site where the pedestrian access will be provided and the two bungalow units can be seen in the foreground with two-storey dwellings to the rear. As previously mentioned, amenity planting would take place adjacent to the dwellings and the area on the left behind the trees would be seeded with a meadow mixture for Turning to the determinate issues, as members will be aware, the principle of providing 55 dwellings on site has been established at the outline stage. Access to the site was also agreed at this outline stage. In connection with the application before members tonight, officers are satisfied that an appropriate housing mix has been put forward and that an adequate standard of accommodation would be provided on the site. The matters of judgment before members are therefore the design of impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity and provision of amenity and play space. Officers are of the opinion that the dwellings are of an appropriate scale, layout and appearance such that there would be no material visual harm. Officers are satisfied that an appropriate landscaping scheme could be provided on site and having regard to the separation distances to neighbouring properties, no material harm would arise to their amenity. The recommendation is therefore that subject to conditions two and 11, two, two, 11, sorry, as set out on pages 50 to 53 of the agenda report, amended condition one and additional condition 12 as set out on the update sheet, informatives one to 16 as set out on pages 54 to 56 of the agenda report and a section 106 agreement to secure a deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend the affordable housing mix and education contributions, the reserve matters of layout, scale, appearance and landscaping be approved. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Rebecca. Members, turn it to you. Councillor Dinos.
Thank you Chair. If we can go to the report, I think it's always good to look at some of the comments from some of the consultees. Start off with highways, they have no objection to this, but what I find, I suppose upsetting is having requested that they consult with residents about traffic coming, and I think those who have been on the site have seen that the cars go round those bends fairly quick. They've decided to put rumble strips outside a house without consulting with the occupant. And I think it's a real shame. Okay, Allfold Parish Council, in some of their comments, and I'll just read some of the key words, urban development not consistent with the rural village. Design and access statement refers to Cranly. No mention of the Allfold Housing Rural Initiative. The proposal doesn't comply with policy D4. They say it's a street scenes with rows of houses, bland urban style, two and a half stories, and I think that's been identified by the case officer. They look like townhouses and not village. The parking, I think it's mentioned as 22 garages, most of those are single, none of them for the affordable housing, I may add, which looks small. And in reality, those will be for storage. If the parking bays are marked for the houses, which appears that they are when you look at the plans in detail, probably the available parking will mean parking on the road. The play area, they say, is right in the north-east of the site, and I would agree, it's not integrated into the development. It is noted by the parish, there's no condition regarding its ongoing maintenance, who will cut the grass during the summer, ensure the play area is safe for children to use. I may have missed it in the two applications, but if there's not a condition, I would say there needs to be a condition. Page 30 of the officer's report, it talks about policy TD1 of the draft local plan, Part One, and echoes that of the policies D1 and D4. And that says, new development is required to be of a high quality and inclusive design to respond to the distinctive local character of the area. Goes on to say, the Allfold Rural Initiative sets out that the design and layout of any additional dwelling is to be in keeping with the village. Retaining the rural character of the area is set out to be of great importance. I mean, this application fails us. It might have been helpful if the applicant had referred to the Allfold Housing Rural Initiative in its design and access statement, rather than its continual referral to Cranly and the Cranly Design Statement. With respect to my Cranly colleagues, Allfold is not Cranly and Cranly is not Allfold. An example of how it fails, to the north of plots 42 and 46 is a row of 10 parking To the east of plots 46 to 48 are six. And behind are another three. There's no driveways, just huge blocks of paving in that area. In front, which is north of plots five to eight, are six spaces, immediately across the road, another five spaces. And south of plot 13 to 14, over a small area, there's five parking spaces to the front, four behind and two to the south of these. Those who attended the two-site visits will know this is completely out of kilter with a village setting. And from what I can see, plot 14 doesn't even appear to have any parking allocated. Now again, looking at policy D4 and the Allfold Housing Rural Initiative, which clearly states any additional dwelling is to be keeping with the village, retaining the rural character of the area. So as mentioned, units 49 and 51 do not. Page 31 of the officer's report states affordability is spread over two areas, and I think they're shown on page 14 of the site plan, but the plan you've got there. These affordable houses are in the south, and it's really easy to identify them, they are plots five to 16 inclusive and plots 42 to 51. And that is almost a complete line across the south of that site, from the west to These are hardly integrated into the site. Page 31 states that the locally equipped play area would be appropriately positioned near to dwellings for overlooking the natural surveillance. To me, it appears to be a bit of a bolt-on, afterthought and in the wrong location. This should be more central and important to the development. In fact, when I looked at some of the plans online, it shows additional trees which prevent this natural surveillance anyway. And if you carefully look to the north-east of the play area, there's an underground Cala gas storage. If it is underground, then it will require to be refilled. Having had Cala gas in the past in this village, I know when they are refilled, how smelly this process is. I'm not impressed with that at all, I have to say. In relation to the block of flats, why are they located, flats 13 to 14 and nine to 12 opposite each other? In attempt to keep the development rural in nature, this does the opposite. Moving on to page 32, under landscaping and appearance, it states that the hard standing has sensitively been positioned within the site. Well, I've gone through how there are blocks of car parkings, so there's hardly, well, I can hardly agree with this at all. The council's tree officer on page 33 states that the proposed species that are being proposed are inappropriate. Now, I did chuckle when I looked at the watercolours depicting large mature trees and having looked at the open-spaced field. The trees in the paintings look mature trees. People saw on both site visits that the majority of the site, other than boundaries, there are no trees. I now like to raise an issue which caused me the most concern. Page 38 states that eight properties would not meet the minimum gross internal floor space. Although it states that this alone is not considered a reason to refuse, I believe it contributes to the many reasons I've already highlighted. The document doesn't expand further, unless you review the documents online and take some time looking at measurements, the true impact of this could be missed. It appears that the properties that are under the minimum standards are those which are affordable. So not only the applicants wanting to build substandard houses for affordable housing, those in these affordable houses will be discriminated by having smaller inadequate houses. I think this is really disappointing from the applicants, and I for one strongly disagree and couldn't support that. I haven't even managed to work out if the design for affordable housing includes the chimneys, the nice canopies and the other rural features, or whether their designs are the more bland. So eight properties out of 22 affordable homes is a 36% failure. Finally, I'd like to refer to pages 39 and 40 in relation to flooding and drainage, and I appreciate the opening book that was given. At the committee last year, we had a long debate on sewage issues and localised flooding. And conditions nine, 10 and 11 set out in detail a subsistence infiltration and discharge process. Now, this has been turned upside down without any debate, and I think this is unacceptable. Report states that Thames Water confirmed that an impact study for the proposed development recommended that the proposals could be connected to the existing foul sewage network without the requirement for any off-site sewage reinforcement works. These are subject to them being no further developments in the area being constructed. But I'm aware, but I don't know whether Thames Water are aware, of the two additional dwellings in Allfold Farm Bungalow, the three additional in Dolphin Cottage, Linden Farm, which will accommodate 10 accommodation units, and nine additional dwellings in Allfold Equestrian Centre. And it's also been clarified tonight that the sewage will pump eventually to Sussex, yet there's been no consultation with Sussex. Now, let's see, we've got some technical difficulties. When sewage in Allfold will either go to Cranly, just through to Thames Water system, or it will pump to the Allfold Pumping Station and then to Southern Water. I believe there is a legal limit on how much sewage can be pumped from Thames Water to Southern Water. But I see no consultation with Southern Water whether this is acceptable. There should have been a gramping condition that limited or prevented occupation, provide time for Thames Water and Southern Water to carry out any essential sewage works that may be needed. I'm very disappointed in this sewage has been dealt with without any debate within this chamber. And I think we've been denied the right to debate this. And I apologise to those residents who have suffered sewage seeping into their homes. This is a poor application in so many ways. We are going to have 55 houses in Allfold, but let's get something we can be proud of that, you know, in 10 years' time, people can say, what a good design and how this has enhanced the village. Now, I will let my colleague speak now, so thank you for your indulgence, but I would like just to come back at the end. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you Chairman. Well, following councillor Dinos is very difficult. I'm surprised he's putting quite so much money, it's quite so much time into this, because obviously he's researched absolutely everything that we might wish to talk about, he's covered virtually everything, even on his birthday, Chairman. I understand, and I can't understand why we couldn't move this meeting to another time so we could enjoy ourselves with him and that, but never mind, not a planning matter entirely, that of course. This is three hamlets, Allfold, as far as I'm concerned really, it's, you know, Crossways and Allfold Village and Clappers Meadow, and, you know, I don't really think of it as being a village. I don't see this, and I agree with councillor Dinos on this is an urban development. And I'm hoping that perhaps we could get it improved. I see that very small area of public open space in the middle, which I think in any other development, we wouldn't call it public open space, it's just a few trees in front of the houses. There's a picture of it, perhaps you'd go back to it, it was one of the earlier, it was a view of the open space that was obviously just an artist's impression, but if you can show that for us, that's it there. I mean, you know, as far as public open space, you're not going to be kicking a football around playing, you could hardly do a handstand there. So, and as councillor Dinos has said, the positioning of the leap in the top corner, I think is inappropriate, and if we were to perhaps, although granted that it may mean reducing the scheme by a few dwellings, I think we could make this a lot better if we were to bring that leap into the middle, so it really did have some overlooking from properties, because, you know, it really is hardly overlooked. You can see that, I mean, people aren't necessarily in all the time. If you've only got three dwellings there which could possibly see, it could possibly be seen from, then I'm not sure the level of safety that we're looking for is going to be complied with with this sort of design. So I would like to have that in the middle of the scheme. I think it is too urban, it looks an urban development, obviously given time it would hopefully mellow, but it's not like the rest of the village. And I would specifically like to know how much weight, officers advise, we can give to the Allfold design, initiative for what it was, ADI. Because if we've just got to ignore that anyway, and if matters of design aren't something that we can look at in our determination this evening, then, you know, I want to know that now, because as far as the design is concerned, I think it could be better, and I, subject to what other members say at the moment, think that I would like to see this redesigned in those aspects, and specifically also in relation to the parking elements that are there, on-street parking. I'd specifically like officers to tell us whether we can consider on-street parking to be within the, to fit within our parking guidelines, I'm not sure, I'm too inexperienced, know whether we can consider that as to be within, to help meet the parking guidelines, because I really don't think that's suitable for this development. We do want parking, yes, sometimes the odd car parked on a road can help to control traffic a little bit and slow it down in some estates, so there are some positives sometimes in having on-street parking, but we don't want to design something where, I mean, let's face it, every morning, every kid on this, that will live on this estate is going to be driven to Cranly to go to school. I think the 120 home application that came in a long time ago and was refused, and the appeal was withdrawn, I think, on that one, if I remember correctly, that proposed a primary school. There's no primary school in this, obviously the section 106 payment, I see, has been reduced, but I think Lockswood, as far as I know, Lockswood Primary School is full, it's not going to take anybody, so everyone's going to have to drive on the school run every morning and every afternoon to Cranly and back. And of course, that's probably dependent on Dunstville going ahead anyway, so there's a very big what-if question over some of the infrastructure elements of this development that it will be relying upon. I would... I would echo councillor Daines's comments in respect of the sewage disappearing often via the Southern Water network, and I wonder, have Southern Water said that they have capacity? I specifically like to know whether we have written confirmation from them, whether they were consulted, that they have capacity, that the Lockswood sewage works, because Thames Water, I understand, goes up to Elmbridge, the pool would go up to Cranley, and I'm not sure Cranley would want that, we've been told it's not going to go that way, but that's dependent on Southern Water. I'll let others speak, thank you very much, chairman, but I would like clarification on those issues in particular.
I'll ask officers for that, but I think the school you referred to was on another application which is currently at appeal. Rebecca, would you?
Thank you, chairman. If I just pick up on a couple of points then, with regard to the Allfold initiative, that was adopted as a material consideration, I believe it was nineteen ninety-nine, so it predates the MPPF in two thousand and twelve, so some weight can be afforded to that as a material consideration. Reference to the parking guidelines, the proposal would provide for a hundred and twenty parking spaces on-site, which would accord, in fact, I think it would exceed the requirement set out in the council's guidance, so I think the question was relating to additional off-streets, so just to confirm that the on-site provision would accord with the parking guidelines. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor James.
Thank you, chairman. We're here to do design and layout. Quite frankly, I think the design is totally out of keeping. If you go back to that picture that had the central open space area, and look either side, I think that sums it up. Is that a rural village, different types of dwellings, all those dwellings look almost the same, everyone has got tile hanging, they're all the same height, they look exactly the same, that is not a little village design at all. That could be in the middle of Godleming or Farnham or Hazelmeir or somewhere else, but certainly not in Allfold. It brings me back to the night that we sat here with two applications, one was in Dunstford, which is even more rural, I would suggest, than this little bit, and the other was in Farnham, and the Dunstford one, which was for, I think, forty-two houses, if I'm not mistaken, was unanimously approved, because the design had been done with the local parish council and all the people, and everybody approved it, had different shapes, sizes, little, little roads here, little lanes there, a few little cul-de-sacs, higgity-piggity, I think it was, which is absolutely what rural bits are. And the other one, which was Baker's Oats, I think unanimously, even the portfolio holder didn't agree with it, and it was turned down because it looked just like this. And quite frankly, they've got a beautiful space, the developers, and we are here for design and layout. The layout is wrong, and the design is wrong, and I just, there's one thing that was introduced at the beginning, was all this concrete paved areas of parking. How many rural little houses down Allfold Road have got concrete paved driveways, parking, people have got a little bit of gravel here, something else, you don't have block paving concrete in the middle of a little rural village. You know, you can have grass, what I call egg cup grass greeting, bits of gravel, so they're all different, then we'd have no problem with it, but that is a straight road with two bits going off it, that's not a rural bit, it should have windy little lanes, little bits that go in and out, and if they look at the Dunstford one, they could almost probably redo it and come back with it. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. And with that, we'll introduce the councillor from Dunstford, councillor Gray.
Thank you. I don't think I need to add anything to that, to what Anna said about comparisons, but I do have problems with the design. I think the overall effect of it is, is not in keeping with rural, with the rural villages. We can see that. I think the councillors have made the point about garages and parking, and the amount of concrete that's there, but I mean, I think councillor Daines's point needs to be answered, is that quite a lot of that parking space, I believe, is in the garages. Now, if they can't get into those garages, there won't be parking there. I know it's in line with the space, we've got quite a lot of one-bedroom properties, and I'm not going to ask that we go back and redo our parking allocation, but I would draw attention to people that one-bedroom, one-bedroom apartments often have two people in it, and two people in a rural area has to have two cars. So the number of cars that is going to be on this site is going to exceed the number of parking spaces, and that should really be allowed for. Again, on the design, I mean, I know that developers have aspirations, but to actually put so blatantly an extension road out to the north-east side of the site by the play area, I think is a little bit much. They've talked about the play area, play area should be accessible to the whole, the whole of the development, not stuck away in a corner. I mean, that does really, that does really jar with me. Very much some of the points that other people have made, I do not like the design and layout, I think, quoting my good friend Mary Farazeski, I think we could do better, and I really think on this one, try harder would be more appropriate. I would like to come back one thing on the sewage, not for the sake of this planning meeting, but for my own clarification. It was a very big issue before, we had the, we had the things saying that there would be on-site treatment, between that meeting and this, we discharged condition twenty-two, and on page forty in the papers, if you could just turn to that, it says Thames Water was consulted. At the beginning of this meeting, we were told that it's actually Lockswood and Southern Water that's going to be taking this sewage, so perhaps officers could explain to me the relationship between Thames Water and Southern, and who is actually responsible, and why Southern wasn't consulted, and why it's not in the officer's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Then councillor Lee.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to just add my voice to the councillors that have already spoken, in particular councillor Daines, not just because of the thoroughness of his research that he has done, but also because he is local to the area, and we get our developers who are not local to the area, so there's a certain, if I can add, disconnect there, unless local people are consulted. Now, what we see here, I believe, is format, layout, design, that we've been seeing over the past many years, so that means there's been no thought given to the modern-day conditions and likely conditions of living in the future. And so far as I'm concerned, I would like to hope that as the local plan gets revised, that we equip ourselves with policies that will take into account those particular situations. Access from the main road is one of them. I believe that with the quantity and the larger vehicles that are used commonly these days, essentially, you need a sort of a draw-off before you actually turn into the site, so that vehicles in those conditions, when somebody's trying to get out or get in, they are not leaving themselves on the road with the possible dangerous features that that means, particularly bearing in mind that coming from the north, we have a bend that is quite close to the access. If we come from the south, then that's a very straight road, and really, there isn't any sort of safety issues in respect of sightlines. I'm reminded today, given that I parked in South Street Car Park, that I was slap-bang in the middle of the lines that denote the space, a vehicle on either side, and in getting out of the car, not only are you compelled to put your fingers around the edge to prevent it engaging with the next car, but I think I will have to start slimming, because I'm clearly too big to sensibly get out of the car and back in. And I mean, these designs, sort of these measurements, were laid down many years ago, and I'm so disappointed that we are being forced by inspectors to think of twenty sixteen housing requirements in terms of number, but we're looking at twenty thirteen guidelines in respect of parking spaces. Clearly, and without a shadow of a doubt, there will be on-road parking, on pavement, on-road parking, and there will be occasions when the larger vehicles, one will definitely have to stop and, you know, the other one will have to get out of the way. Now then, having said all that, and reflecting what I would like to see for the future in general terms, I can understand how and why the officers have come up with their recommendation, and in that sense, I can't see us going against it, but personally, I will not be supporting it, because it goes completely against what I believe is good for the community and for even health and wellbeing, and bearing in mind that health and wellbeing is one of our corporate objectives, planning and design comes into that as well. I shall shut up now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. See, the officers are still working, so I'll turn to councillor Band.
Thank you, chairman. Well, one of the problems we're all suffering from here is we're boxed in from the outline permissions which have already been granted, and so we've got a tight site with fifty-five houses already committed, with the access already agreed. I think it is disappointing that the developer hasn't worked more closely with the local community to engage as a layout which was more acceptable to the local community, and I think we've always seen, as others have mentioned, that where this takes, where a real close relationship does develop between the developer and the local community, you make the best of a bad job with what we're committed to. Having said that, if you approach this development from the Allfold crossroads, there are many other developments which have taken place in past years, which are frankly an awful lot worse than this. I mean, I mean, yes, it's not as nice and as villagey as Allfold Village per se around by the church, but from Allfold crossroads, it's a different story. So I think you have a ribbon development along this road, and it's not wildly out of keeping. I think the disappointing things are the layout itself, the way the parking has been arranged, and I agree with the, you know, the last comment, you know, we're again boxed in with our own policy, but really, in an area like this, where there's, what, one or two buses a day, the chances of people using public transport to get anywhere are frankly zilch, and so every house will have cars, every visitor will have cars, and frankly, our parking guidelines are inadequate for rural areas such as this. I know the developer has met our guidelines, and I know there's nothing we can do about it, again, it's another example of where we're being boxed in, in what we're having to approve. We know that these numbers, this amount of parking will lead to parking on the roads. It's as, you know, sure as night follows day, that's exactly what will happen, because of its extreme rural location with the minimal amount of public transport available. So I'm in a quandary, I mean, I recognise at the starting point is the outline consent. I agree, this could be done better, I would, again, would like to see the developer work closely, more closely with the local community, to produce a layout which is more acceptable to them, but they all have to recognise that the outline consent exists, so we have to work within those limits. So it is difficult, I'm sure it can be improved, but the limits are there, and we have to recognise that. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. I like to say consultation is better than confrontation, really is. Councillor Nuzzi.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Much has been said about it, and points of what councillor Daines said and other councillors have said about it. There will be delivery vans and postman van every morning, and we don't have much space, and there won't be parking in the parking area, there'll be parking in front and blocking the areas as well. The second thing is the play area, which is way out, as other councillors have said, should be in the middle where everybody could see their kids where they're playing and watching them, and special the open space area as well, which is too small, and moving on those roads with the delivery vans, with the postman and every other van would not be possible, and turning would be a problem. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Holdie.
Thank you, chairman. I tend to agree with my fellow councillors, that I think the design of some of these buildings could be much better. Somewhere in this report, it says that the developer is the same developer that has done Amless Lane in Cranley, and that a lot of these designs are exactly the same as the ones in Amless Lane. I think that's a pity, I think that the developer could well have consulted with Allfold Parish Council as to their design statement, and tried to make this more in keeping with the houses in existence in the village already. And some of these designs, I mean, looking at the type nine house on page fifteen, it looks very much as if the fireplace below the chimney is alongside the front door, I mean, the whole thing looks absolute nonsense, and also looking at the flatted units in forty-nine and fifty-one on page nineteen, three-storey buildings in a rural village, it just doesn't work out. I think the developer could, should go away and talk to the Dunstford Parish Council and come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Councillor Olls.
Thank you, chairman. Like councillor Band, I'm finding this a very difficult one to make up my mind on. As he so rightly said, the fact is that we have granted an outline planning permission for this site for fifty-five units, we can't take that away, there are going to be fifty-five units built on this site, come hell or den, I'd say high water, because we'd be back in the flooding discussion. But there are things, I mean, I always hark back to the site that we had at Horsher Road in Cranley, where we weren't happy with so many things, and we asked the applicant to go away and look at it and come back with something a bit better, I think we could do the same here, there's various things that concern me. I have to come a bit on the side of the applicant, you can't ask people to provide one and two-bedroom and small three-bedroom houses to accommodate people who want to stay in the village, and then expect them to come up with large detached houses that we see in the ribbon development all along the road alongside. If you go to the location plan, just to the north of it is Chilton Close, where a lot of us parked when we went to the site visit, and you can see there that that is more similar to what they are proposing, there are terraces there of three houses, there's lots of semis, so there is precedent in the village, so I'm not going to beat the applicant up too much for that. But things that do concern me is the swathe of the affordable houses that are all grouped, really, and you could argue they're grouped in two groups, but basically, it's just one stripe across the lower half of the site. We've always asked developers to look at spreading the affordable houses around the site more, and not to create little, sort of, I'm not going to call them ghettos, but little groups of these houses, if they're spread around more, we know that it works better. I have great concerns about the parking and the amount of hard standing, I have concern about the access road, which is obviously there to go into phase two, coming out of the north-east corner of it, it's not required to, for turning of refuse vehicles or anything of that nature, it's just obviously there to facilitate further development of the field behind. And I also have concerns about the drainage, this was a major concern when it was up for outline, and now we find that conditions have been discharged, completely different to what was discussed at the outline stage. So I have very many concerns over this site, I still haven't decided which one I'm going to... I still haven't decided which way I'm going to fall on this, but I really would like to see the developer have another crack at it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you can probably see, and councillor Gray has cottoned on to it, the webcast is stuck on him yet again. Much more photogenic. However, the sound is still going out on the webcast, but I apologise, councillor Gray. You can't do anything about it. I'm sorry, we are trying. Councillor Adam.
Thank you, chairman. I think colleagues have said really many of the things that concern me as well. Of course, we're only stuck on this if the developer insists on taking up the full 55 houses to develop. He could easily, if he decided to talk to the parish council and the local people, come up with a lower number that he actually is prepared to build. Doesn't have to be, just because we've given him permission for 55 up to, doesn't mean he has to build 55. So my suggestion, considering what everybody's said, is that actually the developer spends a bit more time talking to the local parish and looks again at some of the issues that have been raised, and perhaps that means reducing the number slightly.
Thank you. I turn to the officers now. Who's going to start this one? Ken.
Thank you, chairman. If I could just start by addressing the drainage issues. The outline consent indicated that foul waste would be dealt with on-site and would not enter the public sewer. Subsequent to that, Thames Water, at the request of the applicant, undertook a feasibility assessment. And at the point of connection to the nearest manhole to the site, which is under the jurisdiction of Thames Water, Thames Water confirmed that there was capacity at this point without the need for further improvement works to be undertaken. Officers do however understand that beyond that, the foul water waste will eventually flow down to Lockswood into Southern Water's jurisdiction. However, the capacity of this pumping station is the statutory responsibility of Southern Water to ensure that it has sufficient capacity to deal with the additional flows generated by the development. This matter is separate to your considerations as a planning committee and is subject to a separate regulatory regime. Southern Water are a statutory undertaker. They are required to provide the relevant infrastructure to deal with that development, and it is controlled through separate regulations to the planning regulations and law that sets out your considerations this evening. And for the purposes of this application, that in no way could prejudice you making a decision on the matters before you this evening. So just to be absolutely clear, we're aware of the concerns, we're aware of the issues in Oldfold, and we do not take them lightly. But for the purposes of your debate this evening, I would very strongly advise that you focus your discussion and your decision on the matters which are before you, which are the reserve matters referred to in the application. I don't know if there are any other further matters that need addressing?
Parking spaces, garages.
It would be a parking space. I believe there is a condition recommended to ensure that that parking space, I'm just trying to find it, perhaps my colleagues can help me, remains available for parking purposes. I would just also like to remind members that the parking guidelines that are adopted, they have been subject to consultation with the council, do include an element of visitor parking space as well. So I just want to make that clear. Condition 10 on your agenda, the garages hereby approved shall be used for parking vehicles and domestic storage incidental to the residential occupation and enjoyment of the dwellings only. So that would preserve those parking spaces for those purposes. Thank you, chairman.
Yeah. The councillor cover.
I think what the councillor was asking, correct me if I'm wrong, was when you were adding up to get to 120, did you include the garage space as a parking space? In which case, if it's used for storage, then, you know, they park the car elsewhere. So that's, I think, what we were trying to establish, the exact nature of the 120 parking spaces.
Indeed.
Thank you, by chairman. Yes, the 120 would include the garage parking spaces. If members would like some further comfort about the use of those garages, then it would not be unreasonable to remove reference to incidental storage and retain them for parking only. Thank you, chairman.
Not sure you can really do that. No one tells me what to put in my garage, Ken. Is anyone else want to come back? Or councillor Deanis? Oh, councillor Gray is still on the screen.
I don't want to prolong this discussion, but I do want to come back on the small lecture that we had on raising the sewage issue. The issue I raised, and this is the first opportunity we've had since the original planning meeting, the issue was Waverley has discharged condition 22, and some of us are confused as to who's responsible for the sewage. And I think it's a perfectly reasonable question. You're telling me that Thames Water has been consulted and come back to you, but that Southern Water and Lockswood are going to handle the sewage? Now, all you need to do is to come back to me and say that Thames Water is the party, and they have an arrangement with Southern Water to push it down. But just to clarify that, if it's actually Southern Water who's responsible, then Southern Water should have been a consultee, and you shouldn't have discharged 22. I know it has no bearing on tonight, but as a councillor, I think it's a fair question to ask because the first chance we get to look at this is when we see it, and we did raise concerns at the site visit.
Thank you. Councillor Deanis.
Thank you. And I think it has been raised that it is up to 55. Very easy, they could drop it down five or 10 and have the affordable houses to the correct size and some of the other issues that have been raised tonight. Page 48 states that development would be acceptable in visual terms and not detract from the character and appearance of the area. So my question is, even if we accept acceptable, should we? It should enhance the character and appearance of an area, not just be acceptable. I think one of my colleagues said best of a bad job, and I'm sure they can do better. Well, that's our responsibility tonight. Paragraph 17 of the MPPF states, planning should not simply be about scrutiny, but instead a creative exercise in finding ways to enhance and improve the places people live their lives. Paragraph 55 says promoting sustainable development in rural areas should avoid new isolated homes unless our special circumstances. And these could be, as it was in this case, as it was approved, exceptional quality or innovative nature of the design of the dwelling. Such design should be truly outstanding or innovative, helping to raise standards of design more generally in rural areas, reflecting the higher standards in architecture, significantly enhancing its immediate setting, and be sensitive to defining characteristics of the local area. I don't think I have to say much more than what it says. And it has been said already, but I'll repeat it, the applicant needs to consider the impact on a rural village, conduct proper consultation, which they listen to, and actually produce a design which achieves this. This is a poor application, and I would urge my colleagues to refuse it. Thank you, chairman.
Elizabeth Sims.
Chairman, thank you. I thought it might be helpful just to pick up on a couple of points which I think are probably still outstanding. Just in terms of the drainage position, clearly the condition's been discharged, and it was discharged on the basis of the information that was before us at the time in good faith, and we believe that is the lawful position, that the drainage details were acceptable. What has clearly come to light, that in implementing those details through Thames Water, because of the division of responsibilities, a separate regulatory regime, it will involve Southern Water, but for all the reasons that Catherine quite rightly spelt out, this is not a matter for you to be concerned with. I know drainage is a wider concern, but it is not a matter for you to be concerned with in terms of making a judgement on this application this evening. It will need to be resolved because the developer would need the consent of Southern Water to actually engage in the infrastructure. But the principle's acceptable, it's not unachievable, and it will require further dialogue with the respective two water companies. And I think that probably has to be the summary that I would strongly advise you to take some faith in. Moving on to the matters that are more relevant, there's been a big debate about design quality. Fully appreciate the concerns that are being raised. It is a matter of judgment. It probably isn't perfect as far as schemes could go, but of course perfection is not the test here. The test for you is whether or not it sufficiently meets the tests of the MPPF and your policies in terms of an acceptable layout and design for this location. You have approved the principle of up to 55 dwellings. If you think it's too cramped, so be it. But my strong advice to you is that it actually has quite a lot of merit, as we set out in the report. And albeit the dwellings are not individual and different from one another, there has been a clear attempt to incorporate a style which is locally distinctive. This isn't a conservation area, this isn't an area of outstanding natural beauty, it is a rural village within the borough. And our view is that they have done enough in terms of what they've done to meet your standards, in terms of accommodating that broad number in a design which reflects the character of the area. It would never have been appropriate to require them to continue the linear form of the remainder of that street. It simply would not have been reasonable on them, having established the principle of 55 dwellings on the site. So they've chosen, of course, to reflect a more estate form, albeit this is a village, I accept that. But there are other examples of groups of housing, for want of a better expression, which are allegedly under an estate description in the village, for which I think this is a much improved form and quality than already exists. So our conclusion has been they've actually done the job required of them to raise the standard of design in the village rather than reduce it. In the end, it is a judgement, it is your judgement, but I would urge you to consider whether or not, it is so harmful that it will be supported on appeal if you take that view. And I think we have to be very mindful of making decisions which are likely to be supported if that was to be the outcome. A difficult example has been just today, we've had the decision on the reserve matters on the Barclay Homes site in Cranley, which was resisted in very similar terms and very similar grounds. I don't underestimate, there were very strongly held views, but that decision, of course, was to allow a very unequivocal statement on the basis of the inspector that it did meet your design standards. So I'd just throw that in as a material consideration, albeit this is to be treated on its merits. So I hope that's picked up on the design considerations. Thank you very much, chairman.
I think it's time to move on to the recommendation. Recommendation A, that subject to the consideration of the views of the lead local flood authority, conditions two to 11 are set out on pages 50 to 53 of the Agenda Report. amended condition one, an additional condition 12 is set out on the update sheet. Informative one to 16 are set out on pages 54 to 56 of the Agenda Report. And section 106 agreement to secure a deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend the affordable housing mix and education contributions, the reserve matters of layout, scale, appearance, and landscaping be approved. Those in favour, please show.
That's one, two, three, four, five.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Be some abstentions on that.
Abstentions?
One, two, nine, fourteen, did one pass, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, twenty-one, fifteen, six, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, I don't know. It's definitely lost.
Therefore, the motion is lost. May I have a proposal for an alternative and seconda? Councillor Deanis. And councillor Hyman got there first, I think. The alternative recommendation and reasons, please, councillor Deanis.
I'm sure my colleagues here will be able to understand what I'm trying to say. So it's the layout, and if I just give the general, I'm sure they can pick out the bones from it. The affordable location of all the plots, the style, the flats, which is out of character of Oldfold, location of the equip play area, the layout of parking, i.e. in blocks and blocks of up to 10, a number of the houses that fail to meet the minimum standards, which I think is a design issue. So it's all of those, and it's how you put them into the correct wording for the refusal. Thank you.
When you talk about the flats, do you mean the two, three-storey blocks that are out of keeping with the village context?
Yes, and the two blocks of flats that are opposite each other as well.
If I may, I think the standards, the space standards are, as they're not in our local plan yet, might be in Plan Part Two. That is not something that we should consider.
I think it just covers the whole thing. I don't think it would specifically go into all of those issues, but that was just my thoughts.
Thank you very much, indeed.
Can we refer to D1 and D4, obviously, and the emerging local plan? Chairman, can we take advice in respect of, because we don't have the National Technical Space Standards adopted? I understand there are standards for affordable housing, which I would imagine it doesn't meet. Would that be a planning reason we could use where we can't use the...
Sorry, chairman, could you just repeat that, councillor?
I understand there are standards for affordable housing of minimum sizes, which are separate from the National Space Standards for all market housing. Is that correct, or would that be in building regs instead or something like?
My understanding is that registered providers have minimum standards, but I think you're back to whether or not, as a planning consideration, you are placed to be able to refuse it on minimum sizes per se. So I would recommend at this point, for the reasons the chairman's given, not to use that as a standalone reason.
But we could, but as standard of accommodation, as we did with the barn in Farnham recently, standard of accommodation that was refused, even though we had no National Space Standard, it was below, it was the overall amenity, particularly for the one-bedroom flats that are so far below the standard.
Chairman, I think councillor Hyman, you're probably still trying to use those minimum standards as the reason to refuse it. You'd need to be able to construct a very strong argument that the size of these units, albeit they slightly fall below those numerical standards, creates such a poor environment as to warrant a reason for refusal, and our advice is that it's too arbitrary at this point in time. There's not so much differential that it would be a reasonable case, and because the standards are not part of your policy at this point in time, I think you'd stand very little chance in sustaining that argument. So our recommendation would be not to use that.
That's exactly the position I was stating, as in respect of the barn, actually, but everybody, the officer advised was the opposite on that occasion, but never mind. I take your point there, and so we'll leave that. What about the position of the leap, the play area? Is there something in the design we can use to say that we'd like that moved to the middle? Because we want to give some guidance as to how they can get this right, obviously. And I specifically would like reference to the Oldfold housing... And I specifically would like reference to the Oldfold Housing Rural Initiative as a reason, can we please?
Councillor Gray, then councillor Coburn.
Thank you. Yes, I was wondering whether we could cover the sort of layout of the affordable housing, because that's something this council has been very strong on, is that we don't have them identified and you've got there basically a ribbon in there which splits the site. And I don't think that's a particularly good idea. And the other point was on the play area right next to the central gas tank, and I do find that quite alarming personally. And I think in terms of layout, and this is really for officers to help me out, but I'm very concerned about the amount of concrete and tarmac that's effectively there because of the design. If you look at the total area of road and the total area of a parking space as it's designed, that seems to me to be quite a lot higher than you would normally get. And that's because virtually the road rings the whole estate, and there's a small bit where it doesn't come round, but it's virtually ring as well as the central spline. That's a lot of roads and that's a lot of space being taken up by road and by car parking. Anyway, that's, they were the points I thought might help officers construct something.
Thank you, councillor Coburn.
Actually councillor Gray, you've raised exactly what I was doing, the amount of hard standing and the lack of variety in the hard standing. I think councillor James raised this as well. You know, if we had some variety in the materials of the hard standing, break it up, less of it if we can build that into the design, but certainly more variety in the materials, then it would break up that awful, as you say, urban looking layout of just street and parking, which is something we've... I think what is so disappointing about this, I hear this, you know, we seem to be saying this so often, you know, as a joint planning committee, that, you know, we understand we've got to have the 55, we're not having any issue with that, but then we see a play area in the totally wrong place. And you think, well, how can you possibly, you know, agree to an outline, to agree to an application, when you've got something that's so inappropriate, where you have children on the edge of a development, you know, adjacent to fields with nobody looking after them? It's just so disappointing that time after time, we just feel we can't accept the reserve matter.
Can I go to Jeanette now, please?
Councillors, I hope you'll forgive me on this one occasion, I'm new, okay? So, as I understand it, you've voted against the officer's recommendation, which is absolutely understood, and I appreciate, I'm not allowed to make a proposal to you. I can however, on the basis of listening to your questions and your debate, maybe give you a thought, which is that it may be that you might wish to think about deferring the application, now that you've given the officers a lot of your thoughts about the design. Bearing in mind, we have an outline application which has a consent in place, and it's very, very difficult to construct those reasons for refusal in such a detailed way in this forum. So please forgive me, I appreciate this is speaking out of turn in that respect, but on this one occasion, and thank you for the chair's indulgence.
I think we are into a problem area here in that we are, we have a motion to refuse, which is, we have a seconda and a proposer. We haven't voted yet.
Could we have a counterproposal? We allow a counterproposal?
Yeah, you've got the refusal on table at the moment.
We are talking to that. The counterproposal then councillor Coburn.
Well, I was just going to propose a counterproposal then, that this application is deferred for further consideration. I'm sure I have a seconda.
I'm happy to second that one, because we haven't voted on our reasons for refusal. We only voted to refuse this application as it stood.
Chairman, may I ask if councillor Dinas is willing to withdraw his motion? And I will withdraw as a seconda if he wishes, if that's necessary.
I think at the end of the day, it will get to the same result, that hopefully we get a proposal that is proportionate and enhances the area. So I would, knowing that that would be the end result, and clearly if, so I would.
Okay, councillor Storey, I think you wanted to...
Thank you Chairman, yes, I just wanted to say that, looking at the update sheet, it's quite clear that this particular developer has taken note of comments made from previous comments and made changes to the plans that were submitted today as a result of that. And so perhaps the developer will be amenable to making changes if we do defer.
If we do defer, yes. So therefore, we have a proposer and a seconda for deferral, can we talk to that, please? Anyone wish to take it further? In which case I move. Councillor Byham?
I've been very quiet this evening. As councillor Storey has pointed out, the, you know, the developer has changed things, including putting in two bungalows instead of other things and a range of things. I'm not clear whether any conversation of any detail has been happening with the parish council and others to further the requirements. It's always a shame that the parish councils don't seem, and I think we do, I've managed to in one or two occasions in Bramley, get those discussions going and get agreement. It's still difficult to get to the final, exactly what individuals want, because they want different things, but I think if...
You're talking to a deferral, so I understand that. Councillor Gray, did you want to take further?
Yes, just almost procedural, I mean, we've sort of voted against this. Any deferral really, in my view, and I think it's something that's been muted before, is actually on the reasons for rejection. I mean, we need time to actually develop those. Is that a possible ability, that we can go away from here and then have a look and come back at the reasons for deferral? Not against, I'm not against having a deferral and coming back here if that is what the committee wants, but I just wondered whether procedurally, we could allow officers more time to come, to develop the rejection and come back.
I think we have to go to a deferral for that to take place. Personally, I don't think we can go midway between, but councillor...
Thank you.
Mrs Sims, you will?
Chairman, my suggestion would be that if the committee want to defer the application, they do so on the basis of agreeing a deferral to seek amendments from the applicant on the basis of the concerns that you've collectively raised, and we can confirm those heads before we finish the meeting. And that will give us enough to respond to the deferral and commit some negotiation with the applicant. During the course of that, of course, we will engage with a ward member and the parish council, take into account views and seek to bring together those changes in detail before the amendments are agreed. And that's obviously how we've done it in the past and it works, I think, pretty well and it's pretty effective. And that would be my suggestion Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Therefore, I would recommend that we move straight to a vote on deferral. Those in favour of deferral, please show.
Oh, is Catherine? Sorry.
Councillor Dinas is not supporting.
That'll be 16.
Those against? And abstentions? One. Okay, therefore, we have moved to a deferral.
Do we need to firm up on? Do we need to firm up on why?
And the reasons why.
Chairman, Catherine or Rebecca are going to just summarise those areas that we think that you are requiring amendment on. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman. Members, I have a list of reasons and issues that you would like us to go back to the developer on. These include the regimental and suburban layout of the proposal, including the extent of and design of the hard standing, the scale and height of the buildings, and the location of the leap. Is there anything further that I've missed?
In terms of the leap, could we actually just put in the words associated with the storage, the calagas, because it is the area there next to it. It may be solved if they look at, re-look at the design, but I think we should link those two. I wouldn't like to see both of them moved to somewhere in the middle.
Mr Chairman, the play area should be, I mean, if I have small kids and I would like to watch my kids while I'm playing, it should be in the middle, plus calagas near the play area, fireworks and everything?
Yep, I think we've got there. Fine. Officers, is that enough? So we voted on it, we have the reasons. Thank you very much indeed. That concludes our meeting.